There's a lot of traffic downtown. I had trouble.
Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to the Tuesday, October 11th Board of Selectmen meeting. We delayed a day because of the holiday. Would you all rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
[inaudible]
The United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
We did have people for public comment, but they're not here. Approval of warrants, Jason, do you have those?
Absolutely. I make a motion to approve payroll warrant 2315 in the amount of $187,715.66.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? None, all in favor? In unanimous. Bill warrants.
I make a motion to approve bill warrant 2315 in the amount of $1,290,235.76, which breaks down to the town $90,439.12. Water and sewer $16,945.61. Payroll withholding $52,964.30. Light bills $75,029.20. Grants and revolving $22,217.79. Pentucket assessment $1,032,639.92.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? None, all in favor? In unanimous. For the minutes, we didn't have any.
Yes, we do. We're not approving these?
I thought those were under...
Be submitted as correspondence prior to be put in.
So next meeting, we'll do all these?
Yes.
I thought those were under correspondence.
Okay.
Okay, appointments of the board. Appointment of Sean Hood, 14 Yale Street, position of library assistant with the Langley Adams Library, effective September 28, 2022. Position, full-time, 37 hours a week at $16.18 an hour. We have his paperwork and we have a letter of recommendation from the library director.
I'll make a motion to appoint Sean Hood of 14 Yale Street, Groveland, to the position of library assistant with Langley Adams Library, effective September 28, 2022, for 37 hours a week at a rate of $16.18 an hour.
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion? None, all in favor? In unanimous. Appointment of John Finesse, 2 Chapman Street in Lawrence, Reserve Police Officer. And we have a recommendation from the police chief. That's effective October 10 through June 30, 2023.
I'll make a motion to appoint John D. Finesse of 2 Chapman Street, Lawrence, to Reserve Officer for a probationary period effective October 10 through June 30, 2023.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? None, all in favor? In unanimous. Votes of the board. Accept the resignation of Meadow Stokes from the Finance Committee, effective September 21, 2021, or 2022. And we have Meadow Stokes's letter of resignation.
I'll make a motion to accept the resignation of Meadow Stokes from the Finance Committee, effective September 21, 2022.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? None, all in favor? In unanimous. Indorse the draft certificates of recognition for police officers, dispatchers, and firefighters for the award ceremony to be held on October 12, 2022. And we can sign those. Jason, you want to read the other names?
Certificate of commendation for Captain Daniel Briscoe, firefighter Jeff Dalton, Sergeant Christopher Hurstos, Lieutenant Dave Evans, firefighter Robert Hoffman, Officer Christopher Little...
Italian.
Italian. Officer Daniel McDonald, dispatcher Caitlin Akarsky, Sergeant Joshua Sendoni, firefighter Chris Belloni, dispatch... dispatcher Cynthia Batista.
Okay. We need to endorse, or you have the... we can do that afterwards. And we all got the notice of the ceremony tomorrow night here at the Town Hall. Anybody's available. Okay. Moving on. One-day liquor license, Justin Cruteau and Mackenzie Jordan, wedding reception at VZ Park, November 5, between the hours of 4:30 and 10:00. Detail officer required.
I'll make a motion to approve the one-day liquor license for Justin Cruteau and Mackenzie Jordan for wedding reception at VZ Park, November 5, between the hours of 4:30 p.m. and 10 o'clock p.m.
And we have the paperwork.
It says four o'clock.
Properly filed.
Is that a mistake on this one?
There's a motion and is there a second?
A second.
And a second. Any discussion?
Four o'clock. Friendly amendment to four o'clock to 10 p.m.
I accept it.
Thank you.
Okay, four o'clock. Okay, any other discussion? None, all in favor? In unanimous. A discussion and possible vote. The upper project discussion, premium pay from employees. And we have... We have the paperwork with... Rebecca, I think you have a good handle on this as far as... Who submitted these?
So Jason, Selectman Naves submitted them.
Excuse me?
Selectman Naves submitted them.
Okay. Okay. Jason, you want to... Make a comment?
Yes. There's a couple of things I'd like to say. One, I know from the beginning, the one thing I kept saying was, I think it was unfair to include some people and not others. And I know we did that when we include, when we did it for the Fire Department and the Police Department, left everybody else out. We did develop a specific manner in which we did it. And last week, we overrode that for one person on the Water Department, which created a lot of discord. Like, a lot of what we've done with the premium pay has created a lot of discord at Town Hall. And so I was hoping we could fix that tonight. One, by revoting what we did for the Water Department and making it based on the hours and doing it for everybody else in town. And it worked at the Town Hall. I believe that this list here is complete. I think Rebecca, you checked it? Based on what Michelle had given? If the hours worked?
I know she ran a payroll report to reflect all those pay periods, so not...
Or in the emergency... What is from...
From March until Ju...
March until June. And right now, it would be $36,200. And I believe that also includes the people at the Water Department.
That's what I'm looking for.
Because that wasn't, this was done before that vote. And then if we were to take and go back and put everybody at the 2,000 like we did for the Water Department, to avoid any additional discord, that would cost the town upwards of $212,000. Thanks to Sarah for calculating that out for us.
Oh, there's not, right? Is that...
So it seems...
What are the Water and Sewer Department names that we're looking for? I see Colin, I see Matthew.
So there is an error on that list because the report that was run by Michelle is, again, based upon payroll records. And the hours that were submitted for the Water and Sewer were calculated based upon hours worked. And so the hours that you have on that sheet specifically for that is not representative of the hours worked.
Okay. So it still needs a little bit of adjusting. But ultimately, we made the exception for one person. And it's extremely unfair to everybody else.
No, we made the exception for the Water Department.
We made the exception for the Water Department to be done at the full $2,000 and not based on the hours worked, like we did for the entire Fire Department and Police Department, and which I'm proposing to do for the rest of the Town Hall employees.
Anybody? Dan?
Yeah. The Water Department, we put on the back burner, waiting till we found out whether or not we could replace the lead pipes at the Bagnell Elementary School. We didn't make anyone else wait. As far as I know, the Water and Sewer guy is a full-time. So it's not like a minimum for our part-timers. I think, forgive me for getting his name, but I think he made a good case that it's a dirty job and subjected the Water and Sewer guys to exposure to a virus that early on, none of us really knew how dangerous it was. We, as a board, voted to pay out some of this premium pay to the first responders. And arguably, the way I see it, those people suggested themselves to unknown risks as well, picking up sick people and responding to calls. So I think that's far and above, head and shoulders above, people that work remotely and did not expose themselves to sick people in their homes and side of the road and wherever they responded, the fire and the police. Water and sewer, I could see them, you know, if they were unhappy because they had to wait. They took a backseat to the Bagnell Elementary lead project. It worked out favorably because we, I think we resolved that issue for a lot less than 440,000, closer to 85-ish. So we have extra money now, but I don't think that, you know, if you worked remotely and you didn't come into Town Hall, I don't think it's grossly unfair that first responders got something that you didn't. And I said at the last meeting, I work a desk, okay? I'm not going to sit here and tell you that my job is any, is as risky as a nurse or a doctor bedside, you know, sucking COVID fluid out of a patient's lungs or a first responder showing up for sick people coughing and hacking. So I disagree with Selectman Naves there on that. I just, you know, people have different responsibilities, duties, and some employees didn't call in sick and they put themselves and their families at risk to an unknown disease. And I appreciate what they did. As far as the delta, yeah, the $2,000, you know, I think it was my motion to push for that. What were we arguing about there? Full-time, if you read the numbers on that, what would it be? $1,600, $1,700? What's the delta? We're talking about $300? What's the delta?
Two of them got the $2,000 and one of them would have been at $1,600.
Okay, so we're sitting here arguing about fairness over $400? That's what we're doing. That's, and I've thought about this because I get flack for everything. And part of me thinks that, you know, if people aren't unhappy, I must not be doing the right thing, so I must have done the right thing. Okay, but, you know, if people could get upset at me for saying this, but it's kind of like when my kids were little and one of them got six french fries and the other one got four. And I'd be like, "Yeah, but your french fries are longer. It's the same amount of potato." So you can't compare apples to apples because they're not the same jobs. They're not the same responsibilities. And we pick and choose all the time who gets what.
He's repeating himself.
I'm not repeating myself, don't interrupt me. All right? So is there equality? You know, part of me doesn't want to hear it because if you look at the union contracts, they're much better than the other contracts and the at-will employees. So if we want to talk about equality across the board, put everything on the table and I'll talk about inequalities as well. And I don't think people are going to like that discussion. Thank you.
Kathy?
Yes, I think that there's two, two problems with the vote that this board took last week. The first problem is that this board had adopted a methodology for allocating the premium pay. And we applied that methodology to the Police and Fire Department. And then because somebody decided to just throw that out the window, they just changed the numbers and said, "Well, the $400 doesn't matter." Actually, it matters quite a bit because if you go back and apply this new idea that everybody gets $2,000, we would have to pay out, according to Sarah Sheehan McGrath's analysis, which I'm thinking is probably correct, she's an accountant, we'd have to pay out to the Police Department another $10,000 on top of what we've already paid. And the Fire Department, we need to pay another $45,600 out to make it the same as what we just did. So to just minimize is $400, it doesn't matter. You know, that's 400 taxpayer dollars. That's $400 that somebody worked to earn. You never should minimize how we allocate tax dollars. I'm, I'm fine with debating how we allocate it, but I'll never trivialize whether $1,000 is not important to someone or $400 is not important to someone. Every dollar matters. And once you adopt that strategy that every dollar matters, then you take it very seriously when we're asked to make these kinds of votes. So I had a number of concerns with extending beyond the Police and Fire, but since it seems to be the will of the majority of this board to do that, I'll point out that the Water and Sewer employees are 70% Water, 30% Sewer. I didn't bother argue about splitting out 30% for the fact that they only work on sewer 30% of their hours. I don't want to get into that. I think the methodology that we applied to the Police and the Fire Department was fair and that it correctly allocated funds. And I think that the prior vote that we just did, well, I vote against it, but those of you that voted for it, you should seriously consider rescinding it and then voting it in accordance with this methodology. And then further consider extending this methodology to the remaining Town employees because even though they didn't go out and unclog a plugged pipe, and I'm not saying that that's not a dirty job, it's a dirty job, but that's the job, irregardless of a virus or not a virus, that's the job. It's always been that way. The Town Hall employees, I know for a fact, did meet people in the parking lot, did assist the public at the front door, did everything they possibly could to still be available as much as possible to the public. And I know that this kind of work was done with some contact and also was done with a degree of stress for the Town Hall employees. Because at that time, I don't know if you recall, we did not know really how contagious or how this virus could get passed. There was, the library was putting books on a shelf for two weeks before handling them again, if I remember correctly. And there was all kinds of protocols we were following. We closed down playground equipment because we weren't sure if somebody touched it and then somebody touched it an hour later, if someone could catch the virus. There was a lot of uncertainty. And I think if we're going to extend beyond those that went into people's homes, then we need to consider the entire employee base who worked for the town during the emergency declaration period. It just, to me, seems fair and we should apply the same methodology that we developed for the Fire and Police Department. I think it's, it's rather insulting to the Police and Fire Department department heads in particular, who took the time to put together these hours for the analysis and participated in it and thought it was fair. And to just turn around and throw it out the window because $400 doesn't matter. I think $400 matters, $1,000 matters, $10,000 matters, $45,600 matters. And if we went and gave everybody $2,000, I guess it's maybe $102,000. So we saved a little, some money, some un-quantified amount of money at Bagnell by using the hookup to the new part of the school. But the other money that we're not spending is because we're not doing some of the other work. And, and I understand that and I know that, and I said that at the meeting. It's not that we've saved all that money, we're just not doing it all. But we're work focusing on bringing clean water fountains to the school, which I agree is a good priority. I think it's a good thing that we're doing at Bagnell. But the other stuff, the other things that are leaking and not doing well will eventually have to be addressed, would be my thought. So I just think we had a methodology. And before we keep applying new methodologies, we should go back and revisit the first methodology and see whether or not we think that was fair. And if it's fair, then we should apply it in all instances.
Jason?
Yeah, and, and I don't want to try to single people out because it was a stressful situation. But you do have employees like the Highway Department that worked with the police. Steve McPherson, who cleaned the toilets here, the police station and the fire station. He cleaned the playground equipment. So everybody had their part, the people that went out in the parking lot. And it was very stressful for a lot of different people. And it's not for us to quantify how stressful it was for them because each individual has their own scale of that stress. And the $400, for me, it's not a big deal. But for the other employees here in Town Hall, it is a big deal. And that's where, that's where it becomes a bigger issue for me. Because, yeah, it's $400, it's not a lot, not a lot to me, probably not a lot to you. But to all the other employees, it is. And that's, that creates a lot of discord and makes it very difficult to work efficiently and effectively here at Town Hall. And the little decisions that we made, like when we gave it to the police station, it stirred up a lot of discussion here at Town Hall amongst the employees. When we did it to, gave it to the Water Department, stirred up even more. And in terms of making people wait, we've been making the Highway Department wait because they came in with the same arguments and similar, well, similar arguments that the Water Department did at the same time. So it's more about trying to remove the stigma of not taking care of our employees. And that's the reason why I think we would be better off if we did it straight across the board.
Dan?
Yeah, if it's only the issue of $400, in fairness, take it out of my stipend, you know? I'll give it to them, okay? But to say that we need to pay out another, you know, 90 grand or 200 grand because of a $400 in equity, I think is, I think it's silly. I'll pay the $400, okay? Because to me, it's, it's trivial and people always want money. No matter what, no matter what you get, people are dissatisfied. Count your blessings, be happy, be happy with what you have. And if there's a lot of discord over $400, just bring it my way, okay? Direct it at me, okay? We'll talk about your $400. Thank you.
Anybody? Mark? Maybe.
Well, so... Trying to think of how I can word this without crossing the line, I guess. The union contract that the Water and Sewer has says when it's declared a state of emergency, they get double time, I'm pretty sure. So I was kind of thinking, we make them happy with the two grand, they're not going to come after us with that. And that's something they should take into consideration.
Rebecca, do you have anything on that?
I believe the union representative stated that they were not going to proceed with that because of the fact that they didn't necessarily anticipate something like COVID being an emergency. They were thinking more like hurricane disaster, snow emergencies and things of that nature that required them to be out for long periods of time and going above and beyond in order to make sure that the residents were safe and had access to their roads and things of that nature. I don't believe that they anticipated that to include a health pandemic. And I believe that the union representative said that that clause is in many different municipal contracts. And because of the fact that it would bankrupt the town and many of the communities that had it in there, they would not move forward with proceeding with such.
Jason.
And is that clause also in the Highway Department?
Yes.
Yep.
Well...
Both waived it.
It's, the way it's worded, it doesn't, it doesn't say that. So they, they have a valid case they could come after.
No, they actually, they waived it.
Kathy, he has the floor. Stop interrupting.
No, I was, I'm just saying, the way it's worded in the contracts, because I was obviously working at that time, they could come after us. And...
Kathy?
I can check the minutes for you, Mark, or you can check them yourself. I believe that we were informed that that was waived by the union representative because it did, it was brought up to our attention. But I would like to make a motion to approve the premium pay for the remaining Town employees, subject to the Town Administrator double-checking the hours on the list to make sure it is conformed to the original allocation and how it was done with the Police and Fire Department.
Are you looking to...
The $36,000.
Looking to reconsider the vote taken at the last meeting?
Unfortunately, I would love to reconsider, but I can't because I was not on the prevailing side. I'm ma... I'm making a motion for all of the employees excluding the Water Department on this list from Jason, subject to a verification by our Town Administrator to distribute their premium pay, according to the old system.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Dan?
Yeah, we don't know if we're going to need those additional funds for something else. And we have, I think, two years to spend them, something like that. And I think it's, we should wait. And winter's coming and who knows? Maybe we'll have a resurgence of the COVID Part II, III, or IV. So I think it's premature to spend all the money. I mean, it's, it's been a grab bag and $2 million. It's down to a lot less than $2 million.
Anybody else? Kathy?
So in response, at least my, my, my motion and my fiscal analysis is consistent with a system that this board adopted. And I don't try and throw, throw different money different ways and then make a new rule up. I think applying the same rule consistently tells the Town employees that we value each and every one of them and that we're doing the best we can. And I think that we do need to take this step, even if we might need this money for something because of the misstep that's been made. I think that in the interest of fairness and equity, this is a necessary step for the other employees.
You want to state your full motion again?
My motion is to pay the premium page, the remaining Town employees, which would exclude the Water employees because you made a different allocation to them, using the methodology that was applied to the Police and Fire Department.
Okay, and Jason used second to that. Any further discussion? None? We're ready for a vote? All in favor? Oppose? Four in favor, one opposed. Now moving on. Bagnell Plumbing requests for presentation from engineers. Kathy, you requested this. Rebecca, you had something on that? As far as, not yet?
No, I wasn't sure if we were making a request for him to come in and make a presentation or what we were requesting him to do.
Okay, it might be, it might be a good idea if, if we knew, Kathy, if you knew, if you could give your questions that you were looking to have him answer so that we could give them to him and if it's costing us to have him come in, do a, if he doesn't...
It's expensive.
I didn't inquire about the cost.
Oh, okay.
So it's, he may be able to come in on the remotely or come in. But if he, I think it would make sense if he knew the questions prior to, so it wouldn't take up too much time.
Right, what I'm looking for is we've changed the entry point for the pipe. And I know that affected the cost to some degree. But then there was a lot of other work that we're just not going to do. We're not going to touch the other stuff. And I'm just wondering if we could get some kind of an overview as to that work... And I'm just wondering if we could get some kind of an overview as to that work that's not being done. I'm assuming it's in the older sections of the building, correct? That's what I'm assuming, it's the older sections of the building.
There's some infrastructure in the older part of the building that they're proposing to upgrade, yeah.
Right, and I'd just like to know, like, is this stuff that we can push off for five years or is this going to come back to us within the next two to three years? I'd just like to know the immediacy of it, like, what is it we're talking about? I'm not an expert in this area, so I would need some kind of a presentation that made sense to me, you know, and not as technical. Yes.
Okay.
You can make the request.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, thank you. Moving on, town administrator time.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just had a couple of housekeeping items, just to let you know that we're moving forward with DocuSign. This will help with our onboarding and hiring employees. It'll also help us with the paperwork and making it a more efficient process internally. We're going to be using it to track accruals and other types of time off, which is now being reflected on the employee's pay stub, but it's still a lengthy process internally to get all that information over and entering it. So this will help us with that. And then we're also going to be using it for our applications. So some of the applications that the Board of Selectmen have, we'll be using those, which will allow people to go to our website and fill out the application online and submit it, and then we'll help with the department review internally. And then we're also working to get the field and property reservations onto the website. This will drastically change the administrative time that I have to put into making sure that the fields are scheduled, who's using them and making sure we have all of the information. So this will be an interactive way for the applicant to actually select that and then we can get that information before the board to make the decision and then we can approve and the calendar is automatically updated and all the information is there. Then lastly, I'm still waiting on DLS for their management review. Hopefully we'll have an update shortly. And the Collins Center is still moving forward with their wage classification and analysis. And hopefully we'll have a analysis for your review in November. And also, we sent out the capital request, as I mentioned the last time. The response is due November 1st. We've actually had a lot of projects come in. Right now, we're totaling over $3.4 million in requests over the next five years. And lastly, we are working on getting the valuation set and setting the tax rate by November with certification of free cash by December.
Thank you. Anybody got any questions for Rebecca on those items? Thank you. Oh, one other thing you forgot was the pumpkin festival.
Oh, yes, and we're having pumpkin fest, we're bringing that back on October 26th from 5:30 PM to 7:30 PM here at Town Hall. And there's a flyer in your package.
Thank you. Selectmen's time and reports. Kathy, do you have anything?
Are we doing old business last? Is that what we do?
It looks like it, that's.
Oh, okay. No, I went to the Pine Speedway reunion and despite the kind of murky beginning of the day, it was packed, it was crowded, people seemed to be having a great time, a lot of history there. It's really interesting, it's a great thing.
Jason?
No, not today.
Dan?
Just old business, I'm coming up.
Yes. Mark?
No, I'm good.
I don't have anything. Older unfinished business, Board of Selectmen's policies and procedures. Kathy, you requested this one again?
Yes, I still continue to search, look for documents and things that I thought the board might be interested in reviewing. So I found that the Mass Municipal Association has a template for a best practice for a code of conduct. It's a very simple, straightforward code of conduct, which would apply to all appointed and elected boards. I still feel that the Board of Selectmen should take a leadership role in adopting a code of conduct. I think it was noted that at our door, we have a visitor's code of conduct posted, but we don't have a code of conduct for ourselves. So I feel that this template maybe could be something that members could look over. If you find it's useful and acceptable, we could adopt it. We could, as we appoint people to town boards and committees, they could be provided a copy of this and sign for it, just like they do for open meeting law and the ethics. And this just kind of sets a tone for our town and sets a standard. I think it's a pretty reasonable code of conduct. But I wanted to distribute it and give you time to look it over, hopefully put it on the agenda for future.
Well, just looking at our policies and procedures, Board of Selectmen's policies and procedures, deconduct of board members at meetings, does that, that should cover what we have here?
It covers some, but not all. I think that the Mass Municipal Association is a little bit more comprehensive, covers just in general, code of conduct, code of conduct with employees of the town, conduct with the public, conduct within your own board, more comprehensive. I think, you know, as it was stated before, the policies that we inherited from prior boards are a good start, but they're just not sufficient. They're not comprehensive enough. And we can certainly style it to our own words and the way we would speak this, but I think that, you know, a good starting place is the Mass Municipal Association.
Okay, anybody? Dan?
I'll let Jason go for his call. I'll yield to Jason if you want.
Jason, go ahead.
Yeah, there's a, there's a bit in here that I think is important. I think it's important not just for us, but for all of the boards and elected officials. And that's basically where it states, local leaders can refine ideas and reach common ground to create meaningful policy. This means preserving civility in all discussion and debates and not tolerating speech or behavior that is belligerent, disrespectful, threatening, abusive or disparaging. Poor behavior impedes the democratic process, encourages hard feelings and divisiveness. And I don't know, especially as of late, that would apply to this board, but I have seen some of these actions in other boards and elected officials. So I think something like this that is supported by the board and presented to all of the boards as a way to conduct themselves in a professional manner is important.
Dan?
Yeah, I agree with the civility and we have, there's a level of decorum here, there and everywhere. But, you know, some of this I have a problem with, you know, their opinion about impeding the democratic process, you know, encouraging hard feelings and divisiveness. The way I see it, I swear to one oath of office and it's uphold the Constitution. The First Amendment is there so that you can criticize the government. And if it's viewed as hurtful to people's feelings or divisive, so be it, okay? That's the intent of the First Amendment in the Bill of Rights to the individual against the plurality of the system. In a democracy, 51 can tyrannize 49. So I have problems with their opinion in this. The spirit of it is to maintain proper decorum and civility, take turns, don't interrupt, okay? And I agree with that, but they have comments in here, contributes to voter alienation and aversion to government. Let me tell you something, folks. If you've been paying attention with America right now, I have a strong aversion to government, not only at the local level, but the state level and the federal level, and that's my First Amendment right to let you know about it. And for those, and I maintain civility, I don't gauge in fighting words or unprotected speech, hate speech, some types of speech are not protected under the First Amendment and I refrain from doing those things. But everything that's protected under the First Amendment is fair game and I don't think the MMA or the State House or anyone else for that matter should in any way infringe upon my First Amendment right to create hard feelings or have an aversion towards government. Thank you.
Anybody else? Kathy?
Yes, I think that you're kind of confusing two issues. Obviously, we all enjoy freedom of speech, that's why we live in this United States. So we can certainly speak our opinions and we all have varied and diverse opinions. And, you know, when I'm with people I'm friendly with and we're sitting down and debating things, we can debate things a lot. But I think when it comes to town boards and committees that are conducting public business, there is a decorum that needs to be present because I remember moving to this town and coming down to a planning board meeting with a neighbor of mine because we wanted to find out why they hadn't planted the trees on our newly laid street. And we were sort of laughed out of the room by, by the old planning board. They'd been out a long time, but we persisted, we smiled and we stayed and we just said, we just really want to know what we need to do to get the trees planted along the street as it was planned. And we eventually did get this accomplished, but I think if we hadn't had the two of us and we hadn't been as brave as we were, we might have just left and walked home and just said, forget it, you know, this town doesn't care. You can't work with these boards. So you need to consider that when people come before boards in the town and committees, it can be a little bit intimidating and there needs to be a decorum, there needs to be a code of conduct. We need to try to be pleasant even when we don't always agree with the opinion that's being heard or even if the person is or individuals being very critical, I think we still have a privilege of serving on a board or committee and it's, we reflect back the town and we need to reflect back the best of the town, if at all possible. And I think that's what this is kind of about. It's not, not intended to limit your freedom of speech. You're entitled to your opinions and you certainly can tell someone who comes before the board that you don't agree with them, but there's a way to say it so that it is not divisive. You can tell someone you disagree without making it divisive. And that's kind of what this is intended to do, to keep the town government open and keep people wanting to come before boards, even if they're coming before the board and they're not right in what they're asking for. Let them come before the board irregardless and be heard.
Mark? Look in this paperwork over, this is the Mass Municipal Association, the best practices and looking like three quarters of the way down the page, the following are recommended items to include in a code of conduct. This isn't their example of a code of conduct, this is to decide what towns should put in their code of conduct. And like I said, we have, we already have a code of conduct for board members at meetings, which, conduct with administrator of offices of the town, conduct in the community.
That's the draft, sorry.
I have the floor, Kathy. This is, this is the paperwork here and there's a couple of pages of codes of conduct. But go ahead.
I was just thinking that that might have been the draft that Jason and I had worked on that we didn't adopt. I'm not positive looking from a distance, but it possibly is. Yeah, it's marked draft, so we, and that was the one that it seemed like the board was a little bit not on board with it, so, excuse the double board, but I was trying to find a template, which is what this is, you're correct, Mr. Chairman, this is not the thing, but it's kind of a template, an outline. And then if you wanted to try to blend the two, that would make a lot of sense then, if you wanted to go for it at another meeting and, and sort of use the template to look over the draft, we could do it that way.
Sure, why don't we put that off for a few weeks and everybody can read that over? Policies and procedures that we have in effect right now, which there's a whole, there's a number of them, and we can bring that back.
Thank you.
Other items not reasonably anticipated at the time of posting? I didn't think, I don't think we have anything. Okay. Correspondence, August 22nd, Board of Selectmen Executive Session Meeting Minutes, August 15th, Board of Selectmen Meeting Minutes, September 12th, Board of Selectmen Meeting Minutes, September 26th, Board of Selectmen Meeting Minutes, the Pumpkin Fest flyer, and we also have a note from the American Legion, they're planning and holding a Veterans Day ceremony on Friday, the 11th of November at 10:30 AM. Along with a request, we'd ask that there be a representative of the town of Groveland to say a few words at the ceremony. And we got that from the Post Commander, Dave Tuttle. And I'll reach out to Dave. I think that's about all we got. Dan, go ahead.
Did I miss old business?
You did, you went by five.
Procedurally, can we go back? Make a motion to go back?
Want to go back to older unfinished business?
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead. Go ahead.
Yeah, I want, last time when we were here, we talked about the school budget and, you know, worried about, you know, another prop two and a half override. So, you know, my position is I want to hold the school committee's feet to the fire in the school district and I think this board should send a strong message that we expect them to stay within two and a half percent of the current budget. And so that would be my motion to this board, if we could write a letter and say that we expect them to stay within two and a half.
Okay, did you put that in the form of a motion?
Yeah, make a motion that this board send a letter to the school committee chair requesting that they keep the budget within the limits of prop two and a half.
I'll second that. Motion and a second, any discussion? No further discussion? To draft a letter to the chairman of the school committee to try to keep the budget within the confines of proposition two and a half. The motion is a second, there's no further discussion, all in favor? Opposed? Three in favor, two opposed. Dan, can you work with Rebecca in drafting that?
I'd be happy to, thank you.
You'd be happy to? All right, I want to entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chair, one thing I just was going to say is that we did receive some correspondence from Dr. Bartholomew about joining them at their meeting on November 1st, being the school committee, where he'll give a state of the school district on 6:00 PM November 1st at the new auditorium. So I'll send you all of those details if the board would like to attend.
Sure, can send that, what day is that on?
That's a Tuesday.
What day? I didn't hear you, I'm sorry, the date.
On Tuesday, November 1st.
Time, well, that'll come in.
I'm sorry, at 6:00 PM.
You might have said that.
And I will send all of the details over to you specifically.
Okay, if there's nothing else, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second, thank you, Mark, all in favor of adjournment? Unanimous.
Oh, boy.